Just waiting for YouTube.
You know why the flying monkey.
I was.
We're good. Good to go.
Wizard of vice.
Okay, good morning, everyone, March thirteen, twenty twenty five. Hi, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning. We're opening up the. Planning board meeting here, March thirteen, twenty twenty five. Uh, what to call the meeting to order? And before I go any further, I need to speak with the. What would share to hear what he has to say to us.
So we had four positions that were open for appointment uh for the planning board, beginning with today's meeting. And uh, three of the four asked to be reappointed, so the select board met and reappointed Mike Powell as. As a full member, Alan Burko as an alternate member. And Rob Wilson as an alternate member. They left one full position open, Nancy uh Knight decided not to run for that position. Uh, or asked to be reappointed, I should say. Rick Smith asked to be appointed as a full member when one uh position opened up, so the. Select Board appointed him to that position. All these positions, by the way, in three years. And uh, that left an alternate position that uh Rick had, it was one year left in that position, so Nancy. Uh gracefully agreed to uh finish off that one year as an alternate uh for that position, so. We now have eleven people as we did in the previous board. Let's just change his uh.
Okay.
On the membership stuff.
Okay.
But there's still one opening.
There are no.
There are no.
All seven, all seven fall and four alternate positions are full.
Um, so. Let's do a quick roll call, Rick, can we start with you?
So I'm still an alternate.
No.
Nope.
Rick Smith member.
Oh, even though we haven't been sworn in.
I I think we'll just.
That's gonna happen today. Terry Wade's coming by.
Yeah.
You do.
Oh, Michael Pell member.
Margaret Turner, alternate.
Nancy Knight, alternate.
Bill Spence member.
John Racine member.
Morgan Dean member.
Catherine Brennan member.
Rob Wilson alternate.
And Rich Rita, select board ex officio.
Mister Chair, just a quick. Question. We should review the minutes at this point and then go to the next step.
I think the first thing we should do is.
Get the minutes.
No, do the uh the organizational movement.
Get the minutes out of the way.
No, we let that happen.
Let that go next.
Do do, we should, we should uh, we have a new board, so now we should appoint new officers.
Yeah. So we're gonna, yeah, so this is uh, we're gonna. Like. Three officers today, so I am gonna step down. As chair. Uh, I believe to remember. I believe to remember.
Yes.
Anyways. And uh, right now, we're gonna pick some uh. Free offices, so we should go. Uh, with the first party result as a chair. Like to. See if somebody would like to be the chair, take over my spot.
I nominate Bill Spence.
So, we could just say all in favor for Bill Spence.
Bill, you have to vote.
Thank you for that vote of confidence.
So at this point, I'm going to turn the whole meeting over to the new chair. Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm over side because you're blowing.
I don't think so. All right, man, my first official act. Uh. Aside from thanking you. Uh, will be to nominate a vice chairman. I nominate Kathy Brennan.
Second.
My second, um, I agree with that.
No discussion, all in favor. Thank you, Madam Chair. And my uh, my second official act will be to nominate a secretary, so I nominate Morgan Dean.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Madam Secretary. Well, I prepared a few uh opening remarks. First, I wanted to thank our volunteer members and alternates. To be an effective planning board member requires commitment of time and energy to learn and to participate. The learning about the master plan, the capital improvement program, the zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, site plan review is no simple matter. Expressing gratitude for your commitment to doing this is the first item on the agenda. Thank you all. As uh volunteers are not often recognized. Planning Board is here to help the town operate effectively. All of us are here to do what we can to improve life in Waterville Valley. But there's no other reason for us to be here. To do the work of the planning board. Our principal responsibility is to uphold the ordinances which have been passed by the voters at town meeting. Our task and our burden is to be fair and unbiased to all parties who request a decision from the planning board. Those who bring projects to the board should expect to meet and to satisfy the requirements of the town ordinances, along with the subdivision and site plan regulations. Before receiving or expecting approval. Nevertheless, the planning board is not an enforcement agency. Although it is understandable that projects that come before the board are often of the greatest interest to abutters and other affected parties. The planning board's function is not to prevent projects. Which meet all the regulations and requirements from going forward because affected parties object. The personal opinions of members have no place during a planning board meeting. Our meetings are public and are recorded. Board member statements of opinion or bias work against what we represent and don't simply disappear into the ether. If any of you wish to make a personal statement or an opinion. I ask you to recuse yourself and take a place in the public gallery from which you can be heard during the privilege of the floor. As well, I would like to see our meetings adhere to the agenda. Questions and statements which wander off the topic at hand prolong our meetings unnecessarily. And contribute nothing to the considerations and assessment of the matters before us. Okay, so let's see how well we can do with this. We have a very busy year ahead of us. Any comments?
Good luck.
Oh, thanks. I'm gonna need that more than anything. No, it's gonna be a busy year, and I, we all know what's coming. And it's uh. Important to try to. Be very focused. Next on the agenda is the uh. Uh, the minutes.
Modified.
Yes, a couple of.
A couple of.
Words here and there.
Dramatical.
Yeah, and the one thing that I can always see every time, every the minutes that they uh, well, call it the masthead. Where there is no summary. These are the minutes. So, I cross that out. That is the minutes. Any comments?
Mister Chair, question, are they? Are they summary minutes, or? Is that? Bad?
No, they, these are the minutes, there aren't any other minutes. In other words, if we write summary, that means that there's a long form somewhere else.
Well, there is, because we have the video.
I suppose that's true, but.
I'd step aside, looking back to. I've seen that in other things that I've been at, that's why I asked.
When it comes to.
I don't care.
Yeah. The record of the minutes. This is it.
Okay.
If somebody's gonna refer to the minutes in the future. I don't think they're gonna dig up. Video out of the archives. It's gonna refer to this.
I changed like the, because this is the heading that's always been on and changed it, so that's a little much going forward, if that's what you all want.
That's good. Okay, any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I move, we accept the minutes as modified.
Or as amended?
As amended.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor? Minutes approved. New business. We had a town meeting. And all of our. Amendments to the zoning ordinances were approved. Yay.
Just so everyone knows, I I did let Tara know uh that that happened, she was very happy.
All our hard work. Yes.
I have a question. Uh, six people. Asked me, asked me the question. Regarding Cochran's Pond, which I answered. And I said, and I wanna make sure that I did not misspeak, and I'm kinda looking.
What was the question?
Yes, the question was, and I talked about. The conditions on the transfer of the corporate pond, but. Cochran, and I said those conditions were available. At the town. Did I misspeak?
They talked about the agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah, anyone come to the town.
I did, so when I said it was available at the town, that was, I have to get it right. Okay. That was my answer, I pushed them away.
Yeah, no, anybody who wants to know what uh the agreement is between the town and the. Uh, resort and uh any other parties, uh there are a number of documents related to Cochran Pond, they're all public.
Okay.
Don't even have to, don't have to be a resident.
I I did not misspeak.
Nope. What, but, what was the question you read?
The question that, that was, I was asked. By various people that I know and friends and everybody. Was why was Cochran's Pond excluded? Alright. And my answer was that there was, because of the conditions of an agreement, when Cochran's Pond was gifted, I don't know if gifted is a correct word, but I think. Was gifted to, transferred, gifted to town. That it blah, 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 and I said, they said, well, what does it say? I said, I'm not getting into that, you wanna know, go up to Town Hall. And they will have it there, that that's the answer that I universally gave.
Yeah, I think that's.
I mean, it's also posted on the website, is it not?
I don't know if the agreement, I don't believe the agreements are, you know, I don't think we post all those. Those agreements, but you can get a copy.
We'll either get electronic or hard copies, but I know people don't want to just come in and.
Would it be a good idea to put it on the website?
There is, there can be information overload, it's not gonna be on the front page of the website.
Yes.
It'll be buried in the, you know, in the select board.
Fair enough.
Uh, page, so it, it's just as easy. Email and email a request or come in and ask. And we'll get your copy.
Fair enough. And there may be zero people who ever go.
Yes, that's right.
I don't know, I'm sure, I'm sure that's gonna be the case.
I, I also had a few people ask me that same point, why do we exclude?
Yes.
Bond and. Um, I got the sense that they were uh anticipating that at some point we could revisit that, and I did not disagree with that. We could all go back and add that.
I think it's an item for the future agenda to. Uh, reassess that agreement. Or at least, you know, talk about it.
The other uh thing that I think was super handy were the maps, frankly.
Yeah.
That was really nice to be able to go over to the map and say, this is what we're talking about right here. And that resonated.
Yes.
I'd like to thank.
Yeah, it did, it did work.
But, but I'm glad it.
And we did speak with Tara about getting the uh ordinance document updated, all the changes integrated into the ordinance. And I would anticipate that we'll have that for you next month. And we'll make that available electronically to you and probably have hard copies for your notebooks as well.
Good.
Um, with the, with the number of changes that we had, I think it will be easier for you to take your current ordinance and. And have us print complete new ones rather than try to determine which pages and. And all that.
Good suggestion.
And you give us those all.
We'll get new hard copies next month.
Thank you.
Any other comments about the town meeting?
I was happy, didn't go until eleven o'clock.
Yes, yes, yes.
Nine thirty.
Wow. During the voting session, I was having conversations with people who were saying, you know, they were looking at their watches and.
Patty, that's a great job.
She really does.
She does, she did an excellent job as a moderator.
I think having all the tables out there too helped a lot of. People coming in, voting during the day. Helped them a lot.
Good. Moving on. Now, the rest, request for uh qualification update. I have a report. And I could tell you uh. With respect to the consulting working group. That the working group uh recommends accepting the proposal from the SE group. And we uh recommended that the SE group's work be supplemented by. Uh consulting advice uh from the North Country Council. On a project basis uh as needed. The SE group offered to provide an audit to answer some of the important questions that. Are coming before us in the next year or so. So I enumerated them. Uh, they asked, or they proposed to answer these questions, how well aligned are the uh, are the policy? And regulatory tools of the town relative to the master plan? Number two. What are the top five or six issues that future growth and development will raise? Where the current policy and regulation tools are not as clear as they could be? How do policies of Waterville Valley stack up against and are relative to other mountain resort communities in the region or nationally? And that's one area where SE group has extraordinary expertise. I think it would be helpful to hear what they have to say. About Waterville Valley. What is, are the best practices that other similar communities have put into place? Uh, to accommodate new growth? And how are they best managed with limited internal resources? And number six, and what changes to zoning policy would make sense given the realities of Waterville Valley? That uh support its long-term objectives and the perspective of the community? So the SE group offered to act as a project consultant on those matters that come before the board, which do not directly pertain to the ski resort. That is, how uh, when I say the ski resort is, we interpret this to mean that the SE group would consult on projects. Brought by Tyrell, but not by Waterville Valley Resorts Inc. I think that's. Make a clear distinction of what they will do for us and what they cannot. So when a project pertains to uh conflict. Of conflict of interests with the SE group. Would not be able to advise us. Uh, we recommend. That we turn to North Country Council. It is possible that North Country Council might be unable to act as our consultant. Though they have had some personnel problems and. Uh, they may not be able to do what we ask. So the working group suggests that we continue our recruiting uh process to look for alternate consulting services. And they're underway and. Later on, I will ask Mark to comment whether or not there have been any uh response. Okay, I, all I can say is that, do we do have? Uh, my only final comment is that we do have uh. Uh budgetary capability to deal with the SE group's uh. Proposal, that is, we can pay for that and we can deal with North Country Council. And we hope that this. That is. The SE group has extraordinary uh. Capabilities, yeah, capabilities, I'd say experience. And then we will benefit from their uh input, in particular, in the, in respect of uh Waterville Valley as a uh resort community. And when something happens, they're really back away and say, we can't help you. Uh, like, we can uh turn to North Country Council. And we'll develop a relationship with North Country to see exactly where they stand and what they can do for us. Okay.
Question, so um, so we've made the selection of the vendor, but we haven't negotiated a contract.
They've made a proposal, but we don't have a signed contract yet.
Okay.
So one, one thing that I wanted to do is to bring this to the board. And, and ask for approval.
Okay.
The select board or the planning board?
Oh, you. Us. Yes.
Another question, their proposal, did they uh address costs?
Of course.
Is it drastically different than what we've been uh supplying for terrorist services?
Yes.
But we're getting more.
Yes.
Are we?
Are we, yeah.
Are we having on anything, yeah, but at this point, I'm gonna ask Mark to, to comment on where we.
Just a couple of things, the, the proposal, those six items, a complete review for the year was twelve thousand five hundred. Um, there were like seven or eight bullets that. We, we select, you know, the group, the committee selected six of them. Um, and so potentially that could be less than that twelve thousand five, but that would be the, the top end and. Of doing that work. We have budgeted fifteen thousand on the planning board line. Uh, if you remember, when there's a project, the developer. Uh, pays for a lot of our consultants times, uh time and. Uh, if there's an engineer involved or whatever, that cost burden is usually borne by the developer, so. We would have. Uh, the remaining twenty five hundred dollars. For anything that's specifically town requested. Uh, when they're doing reviews and things like that, but the majority of those costs would be borne by the developer. Um, the, as far as the North Country Council goes. Uh, I'll need the committee to get together, I received an email from the executive director. Uh, yesterday, that um they're in the process of hiring a senior planner. Uh, who will begin work on uh April first. Uh, well, we have not met the person or had any. Direct conversations with the executive director yet. But it, we can get the subcommittee together to do that. Um, and the executive director said she's available whenever the committee wants to meet with her. So.
Yeah, that's good news.
That, that would be that. Project specific person. Um, to assist you. Um, when the SE group could not provide consultant. So, services. And for the differentiation uh between the ski resort and Tyrell. Understand a lot of the people are the same. That are involved, but they are two separate companies and SE group. I think made the differentiation between the ski resort and uh Tyrell. And said that if it was Tyrell specific and on the valley floor as far as the development was concerned. Um, that they could provide consultant services. Um. Something like the gondola that's connecting the valley floor to the. To the ski area, they would not. Wanna be part of, because that involves the ski resort directly. Um. So. That, I think is the differentiation in their mind. Um, if that's acceptable.
Can I ask a question?
So the fifteen thousand dollars, so the audit hopefully would come under twelve thousand five hundred, so the difference, is that the budget that is left for? Uh, the site projects for, like, because then, then, so we would have then only twenty five hundred for North Country and for the SE group to help us with whatever. Projects come up.
Right, but those projects that come up, most of those costs are paid by the developer.
Right, except even, but even the services provided by SE group to, to um advise us and North Country is all paid by them.
That's correct.
Got it.
Right, um, we, we do bill, we, we bill the developer for, for that.
So, so you feel that the twenty five hundred dollars is fine, hopefully it would be a little more, but uh, you know, it's fine between, you know, for the year for us as a group.
Twenty five hundred to three thousand dollars should be able to get us those additional things which would be finalizing zoning. Amendments or something like that at the end of the year. We should be able to work through those things.
Like when we did, when we broke it, uh two years ago, I think it was, we broke into groups to do different, um, you know, uh. Projects and Tara was on one of our groups, like, so, so that time would be something that would be billed out of, you know.
And we'd have to talk to the North Country, that I envisioned would be like the North Country Council. Uh, providing us assistance.
I'm sorry, one more question, like, looking back in history, though, you said, like, we, we haven't really spent more than twenty five, three thousand dollars on that kind of stuff.
It's been the standard.
Okay.
Amount and uh the ten thousand or so that's been added the last few years is because we hired a planner.
Okay.
This year, I believe it's left, we're up to fifteen thousand. For the planning board's budget, which was approved at town meeting, so the town approved. The planning board's budget of fifteen thousand dollars, so that's what the planning board had, but traditionally, it's only been a few thousand dollars until we decided to hire Tara. To help us, and then it bumped up to ten, I think it was.
And if something really unexpected comes up. The chair comes into the select board and says, we've run into this situation and. We need. Two thousand dollars more or whatever it is.
And that's happened in the past.
That's happened in the past.
Uh, Mike was next.
I guess. The question that I have. And um, Mark said the. Magic word, gondola. Um, I don't know if the guy, if it'll happen in my lifetime. Uh, but when it, when, when and or if it does. Uh, that would be a. Major, major, I think. Thing that would come here. And I think, I think, and I, I think what Mark intimated. Is that is not something that the SE group would wanna be involved with. Alright. Is that something that we think is within the camp, because that's a major issue? When, when and if it happens? Is that something North Country Council is sufficient, or are we gonna have to go out? And find a. Alternative, I guess is the only word I can think of.
Yeah, I use the same word, that we will continue with our recruiting process.
Well, but I mean, I don't know, again, we don't know when and or if. This is gonna happen.
We don't know.
We're trying to identify another. Another company, another set of individuals who can provide us with that. Extra expertise if North Country Council can't.
In other words, we're.
Available, we just, we don't know right now. Who that would be. But we would, we're going to continue the search like Bill said.
Okay, I'll just.
Yeah.
Okay. You're next.
So, um. I believe Mark and I got a. Email from Tara recently. And I, if I, if I got this correct. If we were really in a jam, she would help on a big project, is that correct, Mark? So she is sort of a backup, backup. Is what I got out of that, so she hasn't really gone away, so that would be a possibility.
Good. Like to have. Alternative, it's Margaret.
Probably repetitive, but if we get that alternate. Um, contract person. Um contract person. Their time. Reviewing a project will be billed back to the developer.
Especially for a big project like it's the gondola where it come to you, or a major P U D or something like that.
Now, the working group is vitally aware. The importance of finding an alternate. As we know, the gondola is coming one day, one day. Nobody knows when, any other comment?
Probably not, it's a little sidebar, I guess, but I don't think Tara's on, so I'm disappointed that she doesn't hear this, but I think we should. Be appreciative of her efforts, we have been, but I just want to recognize that I feel like. Uh she drove a lot of what we've done in the last year and. Last two years, at least that I've been involved and I I feel like uh it'd be nice to recognize that.
Yes.
She is getting paid, so she's doing what you know we've asked her to do.
Understood that she's not here today, but uh next meeting in April, she will be. And I probably expect and plan. To thank her for everything that she's done for us. Oh, she's moved this uh. This committee, this this board forward uh substantially. She's made a significant difference in the way the board approaches everything. Including a review of our ordinances and regulations. And that uh what I'm looking forward to is that what the SE group can do for us to propel us further. In other words, we've. Taken significant steps from being the. Town at the end of the road to a. A uh. Well, not a metropolitan area, but you know, the changes that have occurred here have been startling. And that uh. We've done considerable amount to respond to that. So yes, to answer your question, yeah, we'll say something significant to Tara the next time she's here.
I think SE group is going to be very helpful uh this year. There are, there is legislation, State House. In Concord, having to do with ADUs. And minimum lot sizes, which would override in pass, which would override our zoning ordinance, and we have to change our ordinance to account for that, so. Having an experienced uh group like SE group to help us. Uh with those changes will be very valuable, so we may be getting something right out of the chute here with. With legislative acting.
Yes. All of us are recommend are are encouraged to write to our representatives. And uh state. The Senate and. The legislature does, okay, call it the House. To respond to these uh. Opposed legislations to. Would greatly uh encumber. Local. Planning boards like ours uh with regard to what we control. So, yeah, we're all encouraged to write to say that. We're not in favor. Please vote down. Against this legislation. Okay, any other comments?
Seems important, uh do we wanna maybe write a um article for the wigwag to ask the rest of the town? I bet they would care if they knew about it.
Okay, good suggestion. Who will do it? Madam Secretary.
I, so my only hesitation is that when we had town council here, he. Suggested against it.
Oh, he did.
That, yeah, he didn't like the fact that we were writing an article.
And and anything that's political, yes.
But it's not like. Party political, it's political for advocating for planning board issues. So.
We could check.
Yeah, I I would. This is, this is like a different kind of flavor, maybe.
For sure.
Mark, comment?
I would recommend you write the article. This, this has nothing to do with party.
Yeah.
This, this is not supporting one or the other because. These bills are coming out of committee unanimous. Thought to pass, which means. All of the legislators are supporting it. And this is, these bills are going to. To handcuff us in a lot of ways. And change, could potentially change the character of the community. Um and this isn't the only area that the legislature is taking significant steps. Education, they're, they're going in all kinds of directions. And they're going unanimous. In those directions. They reinstated, they passed a bill to reinstate donor communities yesterday. They passed a bill to. Fully fund education. Funds. Uh accounts, um I mean, so it's all over the place. Uh they passed a bill that would significantly change the way we provide health insurance to our employees. A a lot of different things are being passed by the legislature. And a lot of stuff is being. Focused down to the communities and this. This uh land use. Decisions that are being made are one area that they're really. Taking significant steps, so. Yeah, I I think the the board is well. Within its rights, the right piece. Positions.
Do we, do we need to vote as a board to okay it?
Well, I I would have, I would be on the record if I were you that, you know, you direct the secretary and the chair or whomever you want to. Write. An article and and give maybe the general gist of what you would like the article to say, and then that is you as a group. Making that decision. That would be helpful.
It's for the good of the town, right?
Yeah, I hear a motion. I'm sorry.
Given, given that the wigwag only comes out once a month. Is all of this gonna already have happened before the next edition?
Is happening now, but right now the legislature is, uh I believe by tomorrow. Uh bills have to be done in the Senate, in the House, and then it's called crossover, so if they pass. The different chambers, they'll, they'll go to the other chamber. And then there'll be a several week period that they'll be acted on in the other chamber. So if it's still. Um we should research the the bills and see where they are. Uh and then. Like if they came out of that, if it's a house bill that got approved and it's going to the Senate, we would write to the Senate. If it's. You know, vice versa, you write to the representative.
And it's also the governor's office.
Office for veto if it makes it through the other house. Or the other chamber.
The other thing we could do is take whatever we're gonna put in the wigwag and to that point of timeliness. Uh put it out on news and views, I mean, a lot of the same people read the wigwag.
Let's get specific so I can have some direction.
Okay, any other comment? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Alright.
Can I make it for myself? I don't know.
Maybe, okay, then uh you could. Go ahead.
My move that we. I don't even know how to do this, so I move that we. Nominate me, the secretary, to write an article for the wigwag in relation to these legislative bills.
With respect to our opposition. To these legislative bills that pertain to.
That restrict land use.
Land use decisions.
Decisions at the local level.
Yes.
Basically take away our.
Second.
Yeah.
And yeah, just one more thing, I'm not sure whether everybody saw Mark's message or not, but there's some verbiage in there. From the New Hampshire Municipal Authority that probably would be useful for you, in which they outline. In which they outline, you know, what the issues are.
Including the enumeration of the bills.
Looking at um, the, who is, the town manager of Durham, was that who was? Yeah, that was an excellent article.
Very good.
I can't just republish that, but I can direct people to it.
Yes, you may not mind if you plagiarize a little bit.
I will cite.
Adequate quotation marks, I think you could do that.
There are other articles out there that say it's a good idea, so you might want to just. See what they say to you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
She seconded.
All in favor? Thank you. Next item.
We need to uh accept the SE group, we need to vote on, we're gonna move forward.
We have no motion on that yet, yes, you're quite right. Madame Vice, would you?
I move to accept the committee's recommendations. In regard to the uh. SE group. Audit and continuing to recruit. A planning advice from uh another source and also to continue the relationship with North Country Council.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Did well there. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passed. Well, here's this uh. Tyrell Site Plan Design Review, we've heard anything? No news. Committee reports.
House Working Group is meeting on the eighteen. It's the first meeting.
No other action there?
No, I haven't met since.
Conservation Commission?
Yeah, so uh the mitigation on uh Snows Brook. Is still ongoing, Rick Vanderpoel is scheduled to come in this year. I'm hoping. Um also, the Conservation Commission has. Is going to have some uh changes in their. Uh officers as well, so I I don't know the result yet, but I'll let you know. Uh next meeting in April, what their changes are.
I have a question, I noticed. As I was driving by. That on Cochrans Pond. The pond closest to where Snow Brook comes in and the road, it looked like there was a lot of.
Yeah.
I don't know, I was gonna say, is the right word debris?
Debris.
Alright.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm just curious. Do we know what caused that, or do we care?
The uh. We had a rain event last week, and it was Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. There was still ice up to the edge of where the brook comes into the pond and the debris coming down from the brook. Went out over the top of the ice. And piled up on top of there until such time that the ice got. It got warm enough that the hole in the ice had been enough that everything went underneath.
Is that, is that when that settles, or whatever the right word is, I'm not, I'm out of my depth. When that settles, is that gonna exacerbate? Our. You know what I'm saying? I I'm I'm just, I'm just, I I know it's a select board issue. I guess. But.
Well, that will be a. That'll be a town vote to dredge that pond, which is, we don't know what's gonna happen at that point. But right now, we're about eight feet or so of depths in the middle, but. Something what we can't really, which is under, out of our control right now.
But what you're talking about is a good illustration of the sedimentation problem that exists in the pond. That is, that's a continuous process.
Lucky sometimes. But no, I I, I mean, it, that. I think that's the first time I can remember. That much sediment slash debris slash crap.
We don't know how much is sediment and how much is ice, to Rick's point. The ice made that happen, put that. So that you could see it. It's on top of.
Yeah.
Ice. When the ice melts, we'll see what happened. We, we really don't know right now.
In the, in the mitigation uh that Rick Vanderpoel will be involved in this summer will. If he goes through with it, will help with that reoccurring. That's his plan to help all of that debris coming down.
What's the if he goes through with it part, like are we still waiting?
No, uh, well.
Isn't his desire to do it?
We know he wants to do it, he has a contractor to do it. We, when the weather gets to the point where he can start the work. It will be whether or not the Forest Service allows us to continue to go through. They have said that they're going to. That they accept his plan and they're going to let us do it, it's just a matter of. I'm always skeptical until we actually begin the work.
The funds have been authorized.
The funds have been authorized, everything is ready to go.
Is there opportunity for volunteerism related to that thing as well, and we have a bunch of trail worker folks?
Um, well. Uh, uh, we can ask the Conservation Committee.
Yeah, well, I'll make a note of that and ask the commission. They, yeah, they won't allow any change.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. Who would? Who would be allowed to help and how they would be allowed to help, that's gonna be.
Yeah, I think there'd be liability issues.
Well, the AIA, if the AIA gets involved, they have liability insurance. So that'll be something we'll, we'll check on.
Far away from them.
That would be great.
No, I don't think that. No, you're choosing.
One of the things related to conservation, I guess, if if I may, um. Don't wanna drag out the meeting, it's look like we're gonna finish quickly here, uh. Given the current sort of climate in Washington, I think we ought to be prepared for. Any number of things that could happen in the bound national forest. Including uh certainly timber sales. Which haven't happened around here in a long, long time, but it could potentially happen. Not sure what, or you know, what the impact would be other than view. Related things, so if they carved a bunch of trees off of the. Side of any of the mountains in the valley here, that's something that likely might be out of our control, but the other possibility. I think this is worst case scenario in my mind, is that they lease land for development, so. Slope side condominiums or condominiums or. Selling of land related to the national forest. Uh anywhere around this valley, we need to keep, I think we need to keep an eye on that. And keep our ear to.
Nose to the ground.
Air to the ground, railroad tracks because the drains coming, whatever it is, um I'd like us to be prepared to address. Those things because we may have some additional zoning challenges if. If they decide to go that far, I'm not sure they'll get there, but. We should be prepared.
My understanding is. I need to admit it, but I asked that question to a friend of mine. Who is a uh. Really high power attorney. In this area, as to should the National Forest decide to do this? Department of the Interior to the Forest Department or whatever. Decide to do something in a very unusual case like ours. Where we kind of only have a mark, we only have authority for our five hundred and whatever acres. If they did a development, if they decided to do a development up on the mountain, which is only national forest, would we have any input?
Both in safety.
Only, only help.
And that was the answer that I got as well, is that if they decided to do. Slope side development of condominiums, for example. Our input would be de minimis, other than health and safety. So they could do it however they wanted, regardless. What our rules are is the answer that I got, which did not make me happy, but.
I mean, there may not be a like direct way to do it, but from what I've seen, if we can, if as long as we can find out about it soon enough. If we can make a big enough stink about it, uh we can have a chance of stopping it. Yeah, so I I agree with Rick that we need to figure out how to make sure that we know what's going on, and I I don't know what the best, how we do that. Do we have sources for that?
One could hire someone to be a legislative.
A lobbyist.
Oh, no, no, not a lobbyist, it's just somebody who can let us know.
I was thinking more of researcher.
Yeah, like.
What's happening. The legislative of federal, that state of the federal level. And and keeps there, you know, and advises us what could be coming forward. And that's standard, I think, that a lot of places do.
We're fortunate that we have the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests, um Appalachian Mountain Club. Nature concerns.
Yeah, I know, we can request that they help us.
Pretty well dialed into what what. What they're talking about, certainly, they're not sounding any alarm just yet, but particularly in the northeast. It's more about what's how might happen in Utah and other places in the west. But um, I'll continue to do that, I have an interest in not seeing development outside of the core. Here, so.
Good.
Thanks, Rick.
I think that that would be unanimous, that we're all interested in that, that, you know, why are we here? Why do we live here?
Oh, we have to keep.
For the forest, yes. Okay, we got the job, Rick.
We're not paying you anything.
Does the Conservation Commission have any new members?
Not at this point, but we are looking, I believe, for a volunteer.
You're recruiting.
Oh, well, yeah, right now I am, yeah.
So if anyone knows anyone who would be interested in participating in the Conservation Commission. You're, are you the chairman?
No. No, here Levy is.
John, John is our representative to the.
That's right, he's our ex-official.
That's right, he represents us to them, not them.
Okay, but there's a conduit there. Any other comment? Any other business that might come before the board?
Can I extend the meeting a couple?
You could.
So, um, a lot of conversation at the other night's. The town meeting about our increase in expenses in the town of Warville Valley here. Um, a lot of it's necessary, no question, and a lot of it's aberrations, I believe, based on the need to fix some roads that we haven't touched in a long time, but. Um, everything passed, I think it was one thing that. We didn't pass, but it wasn't related to financial, if I remember correctly. Any case, I kinda wonder about our ability to affect. The amount of increase in our taxes here in Warville Valley as a planning board. I know from a CIP perspective, we have influence and work on that, but from a. Just general operating budget perspective, do we have any, this is more of a question as statement, I guess. Do we have any sort of influence over how that goes as well, or is that outside of the review of the planning board?
You talk about the operating, operating budget?
Yeah, just in general, the amount of money that we're gonna raise and spend.
In truth, I think the big increases, uh a large part of the big increase we've seen in the last couple of years. Has been uh projects uh that come through the capital improvement uh. Projects, so I think that's where the planning board normally has the greatest impact. Um, I don't think, I've not seen the planning board involved in operational decisions, personnel decisions, and personnel is the other big. Big driver, those are the two big drivers this, this year. Capital improvement projects and personnel, the 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 uh operational budget was. Not a large increase at all.
A slim three percent.
Yeah.
So, um, so we have folks that were involved from a CIP perspective that we did not do. Right, unless I missed that meeting, we did not do a. Review of those things with the department heads like we did a year before.
Right.
Right.
We did not do.
I feel like. Uh, the broader board should have the ability to see all of that as well, not like. I think, like I said, most of everything on there, I agree with, it's not, this isn't Rick's personal problem, this is more in general. I think we really need to think about how we tighten.
We can, I can add that the CIP did review the expenditures or those budgets that were recommended. With each of the department heads, that meeting did happen.
Okay.
But not with us.
Not with the planning.
Not with the planning board, no.
Like it did two years ago.
But Mr. Chair.
Mike.
One of the things that we know. Is probably slash potentially slash should be. Looked at is going to be that which we just discussed, which is the dredging. And I think Mark gave us some not great news with regard to the dredging costs. Mark, didn't you tell, say it was a seven digit number, not beginning with a one?
No, what I understood was that the dredging recommendation was four million.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, so, and that was something that was put off from this year. So modified.
It's not a put off, it was a removal.
It's a, it was a removal, but it is, it's a, it is a temporary removal. It is something that was going to have to be done?
No. Still had to be decided, that is, there's no, no forced issue.
Okay.
Select Board removed it from the CIP, so it's not under per view of the planning board. Not that we're doing nothing.
There, there, there was a. There was engineering that was done, you know, there were budgets that were estimated. For dredging the pond and for dredging the pond and building. A system where we wouldn't have to do total dredging, we would. Have like a clean out.
Right.
Area and permit that for annual.
And that was, that was the.
Dredging alone was two million dollars. With the clean out area went up to four million dollars. With those numbers and everything else that is currently in the six year program. The select board made the decision to remove dredging from the entire plan. So going forward. You look at the master plan as the planning board, you can make recommendations back to the select board and say. We think that that was an incorrect decision, we think you should do X, Y, and Z. That would be the way that it would progress from here.
I'm confused, I'm I'm all.
Catherine?
Just, so just to recap, going back to um, gets back on track here, Rick's um point is so I think that the planning board. So we can affect the CIP, so from the expense area, that's where we can make an impact, but also from bringing in the revenue to increase the town's revenue. Through ordinances, we can look at how, you know, well, how do we tax, we told, we had the the assessment person come in here and talk about, you know, when. Commercial buildings are built or they're upgraded or things like that, then the ten, Mark, please correct me if I'm wrong. Then we, you know, that tax base comes up, so there are things we can do then on the revenue side to drive that. Development and look at where our tax base is coming from and support that, so eh we kinda have both. Does that answer, I mean, am I wrong, that I think, okay, I think that, does that answer your question, I mean, we've got it, you know, from. Expenses and revenue line too.
Review of the master plan, are you doing what the master plan says?
We should be going down the checklist every meeting.
It will be proposed in the future meetings, yeah. Yeah, that checklist is there for a reason, we're supposed to look.
We 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 updated and we've reviewed, we change those things, you know.
Okay, Rick.
Uh, just one, one last thing, um, so we have gigantic, uh. A big ticket item coming up with regarding this building. And one of the things I thought was one, I'd love to get a walkthrough, like I, I, it's not hard to see, like looking at some of the cinder blocks out here. What's going on with this building and the the state that it's in and why we would wanna have a new building. But we should also think about how can we do sort of uh open house or walkthroughs, and again, this isn't necessarily on the planning board. My apologies for that, but um if we took people around and said, this is why we need a new uh public safety town hall building. And show them like what the issues are.
Yeah.
A little bit more with people when you actually can see that stuff, looking at. You know, a line item on a PowerPoint slide in the middle of town meetings, not gonna help anyone wanna support that, but if they can actually see the issue. I'm I'm saying that from a planning board perspective on CIP. In particular, here's what's wrong with our bucket, front end loader. Here's what's wrong with this building, whatever the roof on the salt shed, whatever it is. If I can see those things and see why, I'll get behind it a hundred percent. Uh versus maybe you're hit me in the wallet, stop it, you know, kind of thing.
One approach to that would be to have the CIP members drive that. Process, ask to see what they would like to see, based on what's on the CIT. And that actually, we probably just step back a bit, maybe we should reaffirm uh who is on the CIP this year.
Okay, as far as I know, the membership, I'm on it. Rob is on the, and Morgan. And if you'd like to join.
Only have three.
We have three.
Otherwise it becomes a quorum.
Right.
Yeah, you're quite right about that, yes.
So maybe the first question is the chairs to see if the current members of the CIP wish to remain on the CIP, or would like to move. Off to allow another member of the board to, to uh get on the CIP.
I would like to remain.
I would like.
Okay, I'm, I'm a busy person now, so. If Rick would like to take that position.
Yeah, I'll volunteer to be involved in that, but I didn't wanna. My my suggestion or my questions weren't related to the CIP committee. Wasn't doing what they're supposed to be, I would just like more visibility into it, so.
No, understood.
Yeah.
Understood, I I don't have a, you know, a problem with that because. In inevitably, I'll be, I'll find out what has happened on the CIP. Mark, you have a comment?
Well, yeah, we. Town meeting approved getting a, an outside consultant to come in, help us with a space needs. Assessment over the next couple of years. That'll be a good time to have what you're recommending as, here's what's happening with our. Town offices right now. Um, you know, here's the condition that the building's in, and so. We've, we've gotta go through a selection process to find that consultant. Um, we're not gonna base recommendations for any kind of new facility or repairs. To this building, just based on our own staff. Uh desires and thoughts, we're gonna get a professional builder. A person who does space needs assessments, uh and get some options.
If I recall correctly, the select board's idea. Was to get this assessment, uh review it, have a public hearing so that people could. Could see what this report says, and ultimately leading to some kind of vote at town meeting. To do some, something, whatever that, something may be, but so that would be a a process.
And that vote probably will not occur until twenty seven, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight timeframe. It's, it's gonna take a while to go through and look at. All aspects of this, do an evaluation of our operations.
It's not just this building.
It's not just this building, there are other considerations, but yes, you're absolutely right.
But the CIP is a good connector to that for the planning.
Yes, and we could also take pictures when appropriate and necessary.
Yes.
And use that as part of our public hearing.
Yeah, the the size of this thing is such that it's gonna be a few years, even though we're not talking about maybe putting to a vote until twenty seven. Or twenty eight. This is gonna be a sales job. Convince people that this is the absolute necessary thing, on the outside of it, I would sit here and go, I'm not sure like why we would really make this.
Yeah, but we need the professional input.
Yeah, absolutely.
And don't forget, we've had professional input several times since two thousand and six. And we have put forward why we need to make improvements to this building or. Or do another facility, the town's decision has been no, and that's part of the process. And so we'll go through the process again, and we'll find another professional.
Right.
And we'll do the space needs and the town can say yes or no. Um, but this, this is eighteen years plus. We have been saying that we need to do something about this building. And it that just has not been a priority for the community, and that's okay. You know, we've, we may do and, you know, we'll continue to do that. Um, but we're gonna go through a full. Review and and show people, and I love the idea of walking people through when they see what. The floors look like in the firebase, it's going to be eye open, you know? So.
Nancy.
Thank you. So I recall a long time ago, uh, one of the ideas when town square and all the valley was gonna be redeveloped. One of the plans had. Uh, town hall moved to town square, is that still on the table?
An option we'll ask the consultant to look at, and we'll talk to Tyrell about. They did have a building that was separate as a commercial and municipal. Use in one of their buildings in the, in the conceptual master plan for Tyrell, so absolutely. Um, you know, this building potentially could be just public safety. And then revamped for their uses, uh and moved the town administration to another place. That's an option that we certainly would want them to investigate.
So there's a lot of moving pieces.
There's a lot of.
There's a lot of moving pieces, uh, it could involve uh roads, it could involve air rights. If we're looking for another place to go, uh, let's not forget the wastewater treatment facility. And more land we may have available here, so there are a lot of moving, a lot of moving pieces. To this, but again, the CIP, I think, is the best way for the planning board to plug into all of that. So um, I ask again, who the members of the CIP are, uh, you know, keep the rest of the board. Up to date.
Yeah, because there were questions that were asked about leases versus bonding versus buying outright. Those are all legitimate questions that we should look at, they were, you know, we're using processes that. Previous town meetings and previous planning boards have said this is the way we wanna approach things. Do we wanna do it differently? That's up to you guys.
Certainly, the select board uh really uh values the input from. The planning board, or really the CIP, uh through the planning board to tell us how to move forward on some of these matters.
You will receive it.
So is it Rob, Morgan, and Rick, or?
Okay, any, any comment on that? All in favor? You're in.
What happens when you speak up?
It is, it's fascinating.
Yes, oh, it's a very good process, you want a comment, John?
I guess I did, is that financially even possible? What we're talking about with the treatment plan going at fifty million for that?
We haven't got fifty yet.
Strike that on the video, it's, it's right now forty, so we did not add ten million. But um, but actually, that. But um, but actually that's a good point. June of this year, we're going to get. The final design review report. And we're going to begin final design, I mean. The design review section will be done, which means we will know where the plant's gonna go. And what is going to be the point. Right? Um, then we start final design and actually start putting together plans that we can put out. But June, July is going to be an important period. Because we're gonna actually get a plan from the engineers about where the treatment plant is gonna go. Uh, how many buildings are gonna be in it and what kind of equipment's gonna be in it and everything. So. We're coming up very quickly on some major decisions with regards to the treatment.
Has the. Has a question come up into that treatment plant? Uh, adding. Part of this building to that new building? No.
Is there any signal from the EPA that regulations might be uh?
We, we have not received any indication that anything is changing. Uh, in our permit or the regulations that affect. Uh, wastewater treatment. So. As far as we are concerned, we are moving ahead with our, our current permit requirements. Uh, and we're looking to the future uh that those requirements will. Remain the same and maybe get more stringent. We're still moving forward. With that.
They just relaxed uh yesterday, relaxed some air quality. Standards.
Where they proposed doing it, yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, if those change, I don't know how much we're gonna be able to influence. Without another time delay uh influence. All of the work that's being currently done by our engineering firm because we. We are basically sort of selecting pieces of equipment right now. And finalizing the layout of the facility. Based on current.
Understood.
I do have another quick question. I don't know what the planning board question or not. Stop me if it isn't. But um, on the equipment that you just brought up. Uh, do we lease all the equipment that we have here? We don't buy any, correct? Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. What? What type of equipment are you talking about?
I'm talking about.
Vehicles and stuff.
Trucks and.
Yeah, DPW police vehicles.
We, we lease some and we purchase some. Like I said, the, the decision to lease um has been specific pieces of equipment. Uh, and that was decision was probably ten years ago, ten or fifteen years ago. To go to a lease instead of a bond or cash payment. Um, the last police cruiser that we purchased, we purchased outright.
Yeah.
You know, um, that impacts the tax rate obviously, right? But.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, do we do that in a single bond? We, we establish capital reserves on Tuesday. You know, maybe, you know, we'll have money available there. We have a hundred and fifty thousand. That was approved at town meeting that can be used next year or one of the coming years. So. Um. A lot of different considerations.
Mike has a question.
My understanding is these leases are effectively. Lease to buy for de minimis amount at the end.
There's no uh buyout.
De minimis is, it's a dollar or whatever. So basically at the end of this lease, we own it.
Yes.
So i- it's, it's a. It, I don't wanna say it's a funny definition of lease, but it's a funny definition of lease. Uh, where basically the op, the way that it's leased as opposed to a buy. Is it gives the town during that lease, the option to return it, which you wouldn't have with a buy.
Mm-hmm.
However, at the end, we own it. So it's. It's a, it's, it's, it's not a lease like we would think of when we go to lease a car, for example.
Yes, we don't turn it in.
It could, for example.
Was part of the flexibility back when we started doing the leases. That was the flexibility was that non appropriation clause.
But it comes with a cost.
And it, it is higher interest rates than.
I'm not screaming, just.
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't wanna make it sound like I'm disagreeing with that decision.
I understand that and, but that's part of the input that we would like to get from the planning board. You know, is it in line with our current master plan? And our envisioning the community in the future. So.
But my question is, I don't know who I'm asking. But my question is, would that suggestion to do this? Lease as opposed to a buy, which costs an extra one, one and a half percent or something. Is that a something that we, we could do out of our CIP? Or is that just a select board decision?
What are you talking about leasing?
Um, let's talk about leasing a front end loader. I pick. Women, pick, pick, pick any, pick any piece of equipment you want.
There's an easy answer to that question. You can make recommendations on how to finance any piece of equipment.
Through CIP.
Through the CIP process, okay? The planning board can make recommendation. The ultimate, the way it goes on to the warrant. Is the decision of the select board. And whether or not we fund it that way is ultimately town meetings decision. So, yes, you have the first cut at it. You recommend. We want to buy this piece of equipment outright or we want to bond it over seven years. Make that recommendation. That's part of the CIP.
Okay. Hey, I could, I could also comment that when the lease expires. We own it. It's uh, it, it is our decision whether or not to keep it or sell it.
Right.
That correct?
No, it, it's the select, it's ultimately. The select board directing the town staff, but we, we generally lease. Things over a three or a four year period and we usually keep those pieces of equipment for six to ten years. The point where that equipment gets replaced by something new. Gets recommended by the planning board. You know, staff will come in and say, we think we should replace the front end loader. You guys look at it, yeah, it should go here or here or here on the CIP and you recommend that to the select. Select board evaluates the six year plan and says, yeah, we're gonna finance this first year. This way.
Right.
And then it goes to town meeting for approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, just add clarity to that. Like, so uh, the CIP committee. Gets into all that detail and the department heads come in and they're, I find extremely well thought out. Of course, with great leadership. Um, and they take us through all that. I think maybe one of the parts of, of this is that, you know, the last, you know. Few years or whatever. Um, uh, not to, to waste the time of the department heads. Because if they have to come in here and take individual question, that's a waste of their time. They're too busy, right? And that's why we have the committee. But I think maybe the committee now are, when, you know, with Rick as well. Is uh, do a better job of taking the entire, you know, spreadsheet. You know, with our notes and, and take the three hour meeting to walk everybody through. So I think maybe that's something we can improve.
Yeah.
In our process.
That's fair, yeah.
Margaret?
Oh, yeah, this is just, you know, a minor note because we were talking about how much the budget had gone up overall and, and. And our impact. Um, the other thing that the select board impacts is whether or not they're going to use any of the undesigned fund balance. And one of the reasons that things went up so much this year is that they made a decision because of what's in front of us coming forward. Not to use any of that um for any of these projects this year. So that's another reason why the operating budget is higher.
Just as an example, the. Additional capital programs and the no use of the fund balance. Out of that six hundred thousand dollar increase that. That we were talking about, four hundred and thirty thousand of it was just those. The capital projects and the no use of fund balance. That was, that was two thirds of that increase. The rest of it was the operating budget.
So. Okay, Nancy, you.
Uh, I was just thinking about the um comment that someone made at the meeting. Are. Does the CIP committee and then the planning, or the, excuse me, the select board. Are you planning on acting on that suggestion of um for each line item, kind of putting a, a really brief like. Reason so that when people go through, you, they would just understand added another person or. You know, whatever it is so that people kind of can.
Yeah, that was. It's a, it's going to be an agenda item on our next select board meeting, which is on the nineteen, three P M here.
I mean, I know it's more work, but it would be kind of nice.
It, it really, because we do it. At, at school board. It's really not that much work because you do it already.
It'll be on the agenda.
I mean, you already do it. As you're doing it, so.
Okay, it would make the report more voluminous. Uh, and it would provide the detail, but I also found that. You know, some of the comments at town meeting were outright nitpicks. And sometimes I think that these prolonged meetings unnecessarily. In that I don't think that anybody who's preparing these budgets, having had that experience, wants to propose an increase. It would be much to the benefit of the uh, select board and town management to say, we have no increase. Or it, it actually went down. But if you look at the demands that have occurred over the years of the increases in population and demand for services and all of that, it's. Quite understandable.
Not saying it is.
Well, I think that sometimes uh complaints are made that uh. Don't serve the uh interest of the, of the meeting or the town. Anyway, who, who's next? Alan, please.
I shouldn't know the, excuse me, I should know the answer to this, but I know we have to do. Maximum build out planning for the wastewater treatment plant. Is it scalable? In other words, do we have to build for maximum build out? Or could we build and will we save any money? By, you know, building to what we have now.
We are building to the permit, which is eighty percent of our net capacity. But, okay. There will, there are considerations that are made with the design. And if there is an additional requirement or the permit. Gets enlarged down the road, the plant can be modified. To, to take that increase. We're not, we're not building one hundred percent of our.
It's two things, right? It's, the, the requirement from the EPA gets more stringent.
Well, the, the type of treatment that we're doing and the level of. Uh, treatment that we're doing is changing and becoming more stringent. From the EPA regulations. We are designing to do our current permit. Plus some additional things that we're anticipating the EPA will be adding to our permit. In the future, so that we don't have to come in, in the next ten years after we hit the. Start button on the new plant and say, oh, we need a ten million dollar addition to it to. To treat for this particular contaminant at this level. We're, we're trying to project. Where the permit will be down the road a little.
So, so when you say permit, uh, that's what we're allowed to put in there based on the different phosphates and.
Yes.
All that. But there's also the second piece of it that I was talking about is the master plan.
The master plan. Yeah, the master plan and everything, if you built that entire conceptual design today. And, and we started taking the flow in to the new plant, we'll be able to treat it. All those flows are in the calculation. They still only bring us to eighty percent of our hurdle. Okay, with all of that developed, the way that we envision it being used. If that changes and something gets added to it, that bumps us over that eighty percent. We have the ability to scale up the plant to take care of. So we're, we're looking at two different things at the same time. And Alan, we, we are only building what we need to build right now. We are not over building. But we're allowing for additions in the future. Our current plant cannot be expanded. The new plant will have spaces where we can make additions. The most cost efficient way.
Any other comments? Any new topics? Do I hear a motion?
Calendar review?
I don't know, review. Uh, next meeting, I think it's what, April thirteen?
Ten.
And that's what about the public hearing?
And the public hearing is included in the April ten meeting.
Public hearing for the revision.
Side point.
Side plan review, regulations will be reviewed and uh, we will ask for public comment. And then the uh, planning board will uh, make a determination and presumably. Um. Approve the regulation uh amendments.
You, room tower, I mean, on now.
Um, Tara will be here.
And we're doing, that's an eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock meeting. Yep. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, former chair.
Thank you, John.